We're good.
Yep.
Welcome to the Clark Township Planning Board meeting, the 3rd day, April 6, 2017. It supplies with the Open Public Meetings Act, track to 231, BL 1975. A typical service meeting has been provided by a non-annual scheduled meeting through Star Ledger, County Local Schools, and Township of Clark. A public citizen annual meeting scheduled on the bulletin board in town hall reserved for such announcements, and by the proper filing of state notice for detached clerk. Formal action may be taken after this meeting.
Secretary of State, Chief Polo?
Mayor Mothercorto?
Here.
Townsend Maggiorella?
Here.
Mr. Kozch?
Here.
Mr. Carrionino?
Here.
Mr. Casey?
Here.
Mr. Altman?
Here.
Mr. Triola?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connor?
Here.
Officer Martin?
Here.
Thank you for all coming out tonight, we appreciate your attendance here. If anyone has any cell phones, if you're behind us, put them on vibrator, we're not interrupting, we do appreciate it. All members have received the minutes of our tactics, and we change the modification to the minutes of our tactics. There are no changes, we pay a motion to approve the minutes of the tactics.
That I got.
All in favor?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. We have no further questions. We have a resolution for the block termary area to be waived. Then we have an opportunity, that resolution is in practice as well. Then we have an opportunity to read revolutions. Do you contain a modification or a change to the resolution? Here we go. On the table, you can check and approve this resolution.
Most.
You have all call on that, and remember that's our tactic.
Yes.
May I only try to let, what, you have to let me make a comment?
You know what, I'm sorry, you're right, I wasn't. Upstain.
Can I help?
Yes.
Can I help?
Yes.
Can I help?
Yes.
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 Resolutions passed. Excellent, my agenda is the discussion of the master plan and the housing elements. Mr. O'Brien?
Thank you Chairman. Excuse me. As the board may recall from past conversations, the New Jersey Supreme Court ruled on a number of Mount Laurel cases dating back to 1986. The Mount Laurel cases were cases that were brought against municipalities which had to be decided in the New Jersey Supreme Court. The court decided that there would be an obligation on the part of towns to provide affordable housing. Starting in 1991, the township of Clark filed our first plan with a state agency called COA, which stands for the Council on Affordable Housing. That 1991 plan indicated our willingness to address the issue and direct where affordable housing could go. At that time, we were granted immunity from builders lawsuits so that we could proceed with our plan. Subsequent plans and discussions with the Council on Affordable Housing continued through 2009, with several interim plans being presented to COA. Between 2009 and 2015, the Council on Affordable Housing did not meet and took no action. As a result, the Supreme Court decided that COA was no longer suitable as a state agency to support affordable housing, and directed the courts of the state of New Jersey to take control over the affordable housing efforts. Because of that decision by the Supreme Court in 2015, all of the towns in New Jersey must report to their Superior Court and have their master plans, fair share elements, and various supporting documents reviewed by and accepted by the Superior Court. We first filed for judgment back in July 2015, which immediately followed the March 2015 Supreme Court. Since July 2015, we have been working with the Superior Court in developing affordable housing reports, plans, and working with them in order to present a plan that would be acceptable to them, as well as one that would work for the municipality. We've also been negotiating with the Fair Share Center and other parties that have sued the township of Clark in an effort to provide affordable housing. The Fair Share Center, which is a statewide private agency, is a front for the Builders' Association. Anybody who saw the mayor's speech last week on television, the mayor did a wonderful job of pointing out how that works. The Builders' Association supports the Fair Share Center, which has taken every town in the state to court in an attempt to provide far more affordable housing than the courts say that we need. In fact, in our original go around with the Fair Share Center, they demanded that we provide 388 units of affordable housing. At this point, we have our total obligation down to 263, which includes 93 from the first go around, which had been accepted by COA but had not yet been finalized. So that actual number is 107. We have shown through the Fair Share Plan that has been proposed to the planning board where 328 affordable units can be placed in the township. The idea is to provide more than what is necessary, to show the court that we are being flexible and cooperative, as well as to show them that there is what is called in the court circles, a realistic development potential. The realistic development potential is a phrase that shows that we have shown where affordable housing can be placed, and by creating the plans that we have and showing that that realistic development potential of now 263 units altogether, which is a 30 year span of units, shows the court that we are willing to work with them, and by working with them, that provides us immunity from builders lawsuits. If we don't have immunity from the court, meaning that the court has to approve our plan, accept it, then they provide us with immunity for a set period of time, in this case, this plan would run through 2025. If we don't have that immunity, then a builder, who are the folks behind the Fair Share Center, and those are the folks who have all the numbers, and prodding us to provide a lot more than we can or should, the builders can sue the town, and they can institute what is called a builder's remedy lawsuit, which means that the town has no control over the location, over the looks, or the type of development that a builder could put in, basically anywhere they would like to. That project, or any project, started by a builder through the court, is something that we are trying very, very hard to avoid, which is why we are pressing for immunity. Immunity allows this community to guide and control development in the appropriate places where it would have the least amount of impact upon surrounding properties, as well as the township, and it can take the style, type of development that we request in our master plan, and we zone for in our zoning ordinance. The properties that are listed in the map and chart and the Fair Share Plan that the board is currently reviewing are all privately owned. By zoning for affordable housing, we are not taking the plan, we are not ordering something to be built there. All we're doing is we are providing an opportunity for affordable housing to be built. That's the realistic development opportunity. If the area's been zoned for affordable housing, somebody can come into any of those areas that are listed in the Fair Share Plan, purchase some, and put up appropriate housing in accordance with our ordinance, but only in those places and only under the circumstances that the town requires for it. And that does satisfy the court upon acceptance of our plan. Affordable housing is typically 15% of the total number of units that are built on a location, and those 15% have got to be spread out throughout the entire development. For instance, if you had a four-floor building, you can't put all the affordables on one floor, you've got to spread them all out, which means that the maintenance will be the same throughout the building, no one will be able to tell that this person is affordable or not affordable, because it really should be nobody's business as to who they are, and we want the building to be maintained the same throughout, for people who are paying full freight, people who are paying part of it. They cannot be isolated, they have to be part of the norm. Having said all of that, and having given you some numbers, Mr. Chairman, we don't anticipate that all of these properties will be developed at this particular time. This is something that happens over many, many years. The, for instance, the downtown village, which was put into our ordinance over 10 years ago, some activities occurred there, such as the 7-Eleven and the bank, but most of those properties have remained the same. And this is what happens in the course of when you zone for something, you allow an opportunity for something to go there, but it doesn't mean that it will show up there at any particular time. The places that we do hope will develop are the eyesores, as the mayor mentioned last week, such as Jack's Tavern, and the old A&amp;P, and we hope that over the next few years, they will provide both market rate and affordable housing, along with mixed-use development, including stores, services, and restaurants. There are a number of rules that would apply to the affordable housing units. For instance, there are affordability controls, which mean that only people who make a certain amount of money can live in. Now, in our particular case, somebody who is single, who makes up to $50,000 a year, would be eligible for a one-person year. That describes a number of our children who are getting out of high school to college, starting their careers, other folks who are working in their regular jobs, making less than $50,000 a year, so these are affordable to people that we know and live within this township. In fact, in Clark, in 2015, the United States Census found that the per capita income, the average income, you took all the money that came into Clark, salaries and wages, and averaged it amongst everybody, the average was $41,000 a year per person. So an awful lot of people would be eligible under those guidelines. There are currently 1,150 apartments in Clark, rental units. 51% of the people in those rental units are spending over 30% of their income on rent. Many of these people would be eligible as well. The township is proposing to provide the rental units in our Fair Share Plan, rehabbing of older homes, providing additional group homes for the developmentally disabled, as well as giving preference to regional people from our particular region, and to veterans. All of these methods have been proven in the past to bring in affordable housing tenants. There are 565 municipalities in New Jersey, and each one is affected by this, including our neighbors. Some towns have decided not to work with the courts, not to negotiate with Fair Share, and not to present plans for the court to review. Instead, they've taken them to court. Our neighbor Cranford, for instance, has spent millions of dollars, millions of their tax dollars, in fighting what is going to be inevitable because there is a Supreme Court ruling on this. Every town has to provide us. Any money that's spent fighting it in court is a waste of money. We don't want to do that here in Clark. Clark is a very proud community of hard-working folks. This township has cooperated with the affordable housing efforts in the past, not because this township agrees with that philosophy, not because the township agrees with the Supreme Court, but because, in our opinion, we have no choice. It will save money, it will save time for us to designate certain areas as affordable housing zones rather than fighting. By not fighting a losing battle, we are not wasting township funds coming from everybody's tax dollars. By choosing places and specifying what can be built where, the township gets to control where development goes, what impacts it will have, and what it will look like. Under builder's remedy, we have no control whatsoever. By passing the housing element of the Fair Share Plan this evening, the planning board will ensure local control of affordable housing development, and guide that development to appropriate locations to meet our requirement, under law and under the court, and what that development will look like. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Before asking the board to... Before asking the... Sorry. Before asking the board to vote on this resolution, please obtain a motion to open up this meeting to the public. For any comments or...
Some votes.
Mr. O'Brien? If you have a motion, we have a second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Therefore, the meeting is now open to the public. Before we start, if you'd like to address the board, please come up, say your name and address for the record, please. We do have a number of people here. In the past, there have been people who wanted to talk for more than five minutes, and we try to accommodate everyone. We don't want to, we want to give everyone an opportunity to speak. If you're going to be long-aged, we may have to cut you off at five minutes, but believe me, we try to work with everybody. So if anyone would like to address, Mr. O'Brien, the board relatives to the Fair Housing Element, please step forward, and state your name and address for the record, please.
Try the bottom of the mic. The bottom of the mic.
Push the button up.
The bottom of the mic.
Green light?
Yeah, green light on.
Thank you.
My name is Natalie Calverio. I live at 47322 Clark. I did the simple mayor's presentation on the 10th of the 6th of the evening, and my concern is, you know, I understand that this is not something that we can change. The Supreme Court has made a decision, and unfortunately, we had to go along with that. My concern is that, one of the things we stated in the 36th presentation was that, you know, you could have a one-bedroom unit where most likely it's just one or two people living in that apartment, and if it were a two-bedroom apartment, there would be maybe two adults and two children, whatever. My concern is that there's no way in force how many people are actually living in an apartment. By law, if we have to discriminate, if somebody wants to have more people living in that apartment, then they should be living there.
Natalie, may I please?
Sure.
It's incorrect. In Clark, we have a square footage ordinance that I instituted some years back because of the fact that we were hearing over in some of our apartments that they were overcrowding children into a one, two-bedroom, more than should be, so we have a per-person-per-square-foot ordinance that would eliminate that. So no, we can't have a mom with three or four kids living in a one-bedroom. We have our fire officials go out and check.
Okay.
And we hope that in the interim, when neighbors or people hear about that, they let the township know, and we're able to squash it right in, nip it right in the bud.
Okay, well, I'm happy to hear that. My other concern is that even in, there's going to be children in these apartments, which, you know, that's a... Our schools at this point are getting overcrowded, and my concern is that the board administration and the administration of schools have worked very hard to bring our schools up, and we have a lot of people that move into town because of our schools. And I'm sure that's what would be happening with term, and this is not just a board level, this is a part of the agenda. And it concerns me that what is going to happen with our schools, if we're going to build new schools, and who does that burden fall upon, is it the residential taxpayers? Are builders going to be given tax incentives to build these apartments and not paying their fair share taxes?
I can answer that, Mr. President. Natalie, the answer is no, no, and yes. You're right about the concern for overcrowding, and we feel exactly the way you do. I don't want to speak for every member up here, but I bet you, I could almost say, every member on this board is kind of feeling like I'm here. We have a gun to our head, we have to abide by the law, and, you know, I've been in this town forever, and I'm going to be here forever, and I'm swallowing this like a piece of old dirty leather that someone stepped on. The problem, what you're saying with schools, that can happen, the only thing we're hoping, as the planner said earlier, ladies and gentlemen, when this plan gets accepted, it doesn't mean it's going to all be built tonight. This could be built over five, three, five, 10, 20 years, or maybe not at all. So we hope that in five, 10, 15, or 20 years from now, it phases in and doesn't show that impact. Your concern is absolutely correct. I just wish the snowflakes that are entrenched, that appoint these people to these judgeships, that don't care about fixing one problem and destroying another, but then again, ladies and gentlemen, we live in New Jersey. We live in New Jersey, you know, the state of the broken clock, it's broken every day. But your concerns are right. No, as long as I'm the mayor, there are no tax abatements to builders, because they're not, I'm not going to be doing them a favor, in plain English. There's going to be sites that are built. As far as I'm concerned right now, the Valley and Walnut site is absolutely in play because they were an intervenor in this lawsuit, and possibly the old A&amp;P on Westfield Avenue.
Well, can you explain?
You may, absolutely. I just want to answer your questions as you go to help you may feel a little bit better.
I think, unless we have, I live in F. Oxford.
Right.
If we ever did anything bad, it's similar to what we have in some...
That's the plan.
...retail and apartments, I think that would be wonderful for us to have.
That would be the hope.
In the area of, the other area, speaking of the bathroom...
Walnut, the evening really, really...
Now, that means certainly residential, do you think?
Yes, it's going to be residential apartments.
And I guess my other question, and I need to take one more. When you, somebody mentioned a number of apartments that we already have, there's not a way to include...
No.
...a part of the housing in terms of those apartments?
No, you know why, Natalie, unfortunately, as our planners opened up the evening explaining this all to everyone, the Builders' Association, because in New Jersey, everyone's got to have their teeth into something to try to line one guy's pockets and hurt the other, they do not want that. They want new construction, or, as they should say, since Clark doesn't really have an area for new construction, they want reasonable redevelopment, and the key word is reasonable redevelopment. Now, if we ever did something with Lexington Apartments, Gibson, and Hillcrest, we could talk to the owner and bring some low income in there, but we would have to subsidize it because he would be losing money on his rent. He's already built, he's already up and running, so there's nothing about that. They, we can't do it in there. That's why we didn't choose to, obviously, the easiest thing would be to spread them out over all the apartments we have in Clark. That would have been simple and saved me a lot of gray hair, but the fact remains, because you're in New Jersey, the corruption capital of the world, people have got to put, I'm very sour, so you got the wrong guy here tonight, believe me, from the state, from the Supreme Court right on, because we have to deal with their mess, that's what it comes down to. I have to sit here and look at my citizens as a resident of this town, and one of our other residents here, and have to swallow a pill that none of us want to swallow. The only good news is, it's every town in New Jersey, so it's not like we won the lottery, thank God. But you're correct in everything you're saying. My concern, Natalie, is the school system also, but again, folks, we're hoping that although some of this plan is laid out, that maybe it'll never be built. I'd like to see downtown Westfield Avenue be built, because everyone told me last year during the election, that's what they wanted, and that would be nice, but it doesn't mean it's going to be built. If you don't sell your property, it's not going to be built. If you sell your property, then it's going to be built. And that's basically the bottom line to this whole plan we're looking at here, but we have to have a reasonable, for example, we couldn't say you could build this on Arthur L. Johnson High School property someday when the school closes. Well, the school's never going to close, so that wasn't acceptable. And looking at Westfield Avenue and some of the work that's starting to be built there, and yes, Natalie, my hope and dream, and that's what our plan is, is to make sure that if we do work up here, it's going to look like Cranford or Fanwood, you know, there's some really great things happening in those towns as far as downtown goes.
Again, we don't know if that, if Westfield Avenue is the first area we know.
Well, it's the biggest part of the plan, no, it's going to be the Valley and Walnut site. They were interveners in the lawsuit, they wanted to come in with 250 units, we negotiated it down to 165, they wanted 30 low-income affordable sites, we got it down to 27. So we negotiated with them during this period, and it worked out fine, and he happens to be the felon that built Woodcrest, our senior housing, which, by the way, folks, I don't know who knows or not, it's not a secret, it was done at all the meetings, there's 60 affordable units in there. Getting to what the planner said, you would never know that, because it all looks the same and has to be...
Mr. President, please, can I add your address?
Good evening. My name is Joe Cruzo. I'm coming here wearing two hats tonight. I'm the president of the City Housing Corporation, started 16 years ago. I'm also a leading estate consultant in the commercial market area. And I want to talk about some subjects that I heard, just those two questions. I want to commend this gentleman, and I'm giving this a very informative presentation of exactly what we're up against in this town and how we are protecting the people that get to go to the government. Most people don't really know what that is. It's hurt a lot of the towns when they neglect their opportunities and their obligations to do what's safe and asked them to do. I want to commend the mayor and the members of the board up here, I've known them for years. I know each other's all protect the town. I've worked with them over the years, and I know that. And the mayor's administration, I'd like the people to know that it took me 15 years to build the affordable housing in this town. If anybody thinks you could build affordable housing, you would have saved it. Clark has no money. They will not subsidize the affordable housing anymore. What we'd have to do, what we had to be able to get the city housing, we had to ask Clark to subsidize the 66 units, and that's what they did. We did it without any government interference. We went there and we did it. Now, what was the result of that? The result was that it was built, it was a beautiful complex, the town was receiving and most of the tax revenue, which shows each and every one of you, hoping to subsidize and keeping, hoping to keep the tax to them because we need the revenue. I think that the flyer that was put by my new office is absurd. The people who put it out are not knowledgeable, have no concept that was happening in the state of New Jersey and in the federal government as far as affordable housing. I know I went to so many COVID meetings, and I know COVID has affected, maybe changed the rules, turned everything. So if anybody believes, if we read that flyer, the dog was like, if you're going to get your economy oversighted, you're really wasting the evening. Believe me, folks, I know that I went through this all these years. We're being protected. The bank industry, we have people on this board and the mayor to do this. And I don't have to come here to be a cheerleader because they know that I disagree with and I fight just as much when I make a rule. But in this particular case, I'm telling you that this is good for our town. And in 1971, this town did not look like the way it does today. This town has been rated as one of the best towns in the world. And I love the town, and I know all the people love the town. That's why you're here. Thank you, Mr. President.
Talk to the microphone.
We're going to move forward, and I want to highlight this, all the people there.
Thank you, Mr. Cruzo. Can I ask you something, please, step forward? Can I add your address, please?
Jerry, poll, I want to ask you. How were the cases chosen on the list?
They were chosen in reasonable areas of redevelopment by the township administration, planner, engineer, and they were negotiated.
I'm sorry, do you want to shoot?
Negotiated.
Could like to comment on one of the locations.
Yeah, Jerry, that's been polled. Because in the House of Worship, we had conversations with them, we talked to the fair share people, and because of the House of Worship, we were able to poll that.
Oh, you're not just here to do this?
No, I'm just answering you. You're not asking anything wrong.
You're not asking anything wrong, but you're kind of a fine guy.
Well, right, that's.
It's not going anywhere, I'm glad it's not.
Right, right.
So the rest of the location, I mean, obviously, the old Jack Tower, Radlin, both of them are in this area.
That hasn't, yes, Jurassic Park across the street from Andy's Diner, it looks like Jurassic Park, it would fight with those people for years to try to clean it up. But you know what, Jerry, that, I've talked with them back, starting in 2002, to try to get it cleaned up and get something viable there. They're not interested in selling. One brother lives in Hawaii, the other lives in upstate New York, and that hasn't been a viable piece. I told you earlier, the probably two most viable pieces in that plan is definitely Valley and Walnut, and probably the old A and P on Westfield Avenue.
Right on, I understand. I understand that the affordable housing, the whole town's to keep it. And then the other one is, I think you're asking why, was it Shippertstein?
Shippertstein's site has been in it since 1992, when it first became a COAL plan. And thank goodness, I spoke to one of the Shippertstein's good friends of mine, they have no plans on selling their property, and thank God, it's an asset to the community and, you know, that old country farm on Madison Hill Road that great people own. And I'd like to stay and stay here for another 30 years or longer than that.
What is that as far as that's at?
I would say residential at this point.
So that one's been there since?
90, yes.
Mayor, return to your seat.
No, now it is, but prior to, correct? Kevin, it was residential.
Oh, is it currently the zone of the town?
Yeah, currently now.
I'm going to wonder, is it?
No, it's a portable now, is your claim?
Okay.
But up to now, it wasn't a apartment, Kevin, am I correct?
I'm sorry, sir.
Up to now, it wasn't a apartment, it was affordable residential. One-family dwellings, townhouses, that kind of thing?
You're right, I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is what I thought. Shippertstein is now for, is it all the apartments or is it all the family?
All the apartments.
All the apartments?
Could be apartments or could be.
All right, the rest of the locations that are on it, that all the apartments, it's a free zone, affordable housing for apartments?
Uh, so for apartments, it's somewhere between townhouses or apartments?
Okay, so there's another, I mean, apartments would be optional on all locations. Because I have a marker, it's only, only, townhouses only in the family.
That is correct. The townhouses will be all apartments.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask you something, please, step forward? Can I add your address, please?
My name is Tom Roytaster. I live at this 20 Hilltop, he's a whole visiting place, it's a small house. I understand we're under the, as far as Shippertstein, up until their last real estate deal, I happened in the realtor. Those boys are not going anywhere. They'll be buried there, we'll have to bury them, we can't put them in the ground.
That's good, that's good. It would be like a safer burial ground.
My family came into this area in 1947. It was a touch different than it is now. The only concern that I can think of, and I know because I was a builder, I'm a realtor, I was a construction official, I've been through what you guys are going through, is, I mean, the good thing is, the pressure I get is, well, this is not going to be done at once. It's going to keep on over a period of time. But the concern is, what about our sewer systems, our water system, our police department, our first responders, fire department? Would the taxes generated by these projects be able to offset what costs might be involved if we needed to upgrade any of these systems or departments, including public parks?
Yes, sir. As far as the sewer system.
You could call me Tom.
Tom, okay. Tom, thank you. Thank you for your questions. We appreciate it. As far as the sewer system goes, any excess flow, they will have to purchase flow rights from the Roway Valley Sewer Authority. Police, no, I don't think we'd have to hire. If we did, the revenue would obviously offset it, but the whole idea would not do. Our fire department's a volunteer fire department. And, you know, that's always a big concern going forward in every community in New Jersey because volunteerism is getting less and less. But on the surface of what you're asking, it wouldn't cause any more effect to the Department of Public Works because, you know, they're going to plow Westfield Avenue either way. I would say not anything glaring at this time. The biggest cost would be flow rights into the sewer system, and they have to pay for that. That's in our ordinances.
Thank you. One last statement. I believe the three properties that you have designated, which might be the first, would eliminate icebergs in this town that we don't need to drive by and see every day. And I think it would be a positive effect. I think you guys have done a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. We're looking to, Tom, as the planner said in his open comments, by doing this, we have total control over the building. I have a lot of pride in the Clark Commons because we literally, when I tell you, was, we had stone brought into my office, textures of stucco, and the developer basically let myself pick out what I wanted down. And the landscape plan, which is my livelihood, so I have a lot of passion for that, but because he asked us to change this out. That was industrial. He asked us to change it to business, retail. And by doing that, you know, we had them by the ears, and we were polling because if you want this done, this is what we're going to expect. It's the same thing with our, Mr. O'Brien said, Kevin, earlier in the evening, that by doing it this way and not allowing builders remedy, we are going to be able to control what it looks like and how it's built. And we look forward, as Natalie said earlier, to looking at that Cranford-Fanwood type design, and it becomes fruition down on Westfield Avenue. Like I said, it could take, I don't have a crystal ball, ladies and gentlemen, it could take, you know, a year, it could take 20 years and everything in between, so we'll see as it develops. But we have that authority.
I think Tom, the name of the mayor, can I ask you something, please? Can I ask you something, please?
My name is Howard Donovan. I live at 501 Park, 55th Park, it's one block from Valletta, Walnut. It sounds like you've already approved 167 apartments to go up that form, and would like to know if you're ready to render it, so what? Do you want to look at it? I want to take a shot.
No, Mrs. Donovan, no, not yet, we don't. I just want to remind you, it's not so much that we approved it, they were an intervener in this lawsuit, so they literally had a seat at every negotiation table because that was a part of this deal. So what we were able to do at that point is negotiate it from 250 units down to 167, with 27 affordable units in there. We will have that stuff when they start submitting plans to the planning board for their project. Right now, at this point, we haven't passed this ordinance, and it's not going to, everything's not going to be official in court to June 29. So no, at this time, so we don't. But when we do have it, you'll get notified at a planning board meeting, and you should be back here to visit us to make sure your concerns are heard and tried to be addressed. Okay?
My name is Donovan. Can I ask you something, please? Can I ask you something, please?
My name is Sharon, 26th Avenue, 55th Park. I have a two-part question I'd like to address to the planner. What is, they keep it explained, I know it's 263 units, I was negotiating, now 300, whatever. How, what formula did they use to arrive at that? The other question I have was.
I didn't want to.
Sure.
The form that the fair share housing used was one that was developed by a consultant that they avoided especially to prepare estimates for each town in New Jersey. They had several versions of their report, starting back three years ago, and somehow through each version, the numbers seemed to grow higher and higher. And then they broke out the entire state, so 565 listings. So each town was given a number as to how many affordable units.
Based on what, population?
They, they used a number of variables, including population, income levels, number of homes, some of the standard homes. Population, homes, income, and employment projections, thank you. Amongst others, those are the primary ones they used. And since the Supreme Court ruled in Chicoa, they come out with other versions of different, like I said, the numbers started in the 300s. So when they got it into the 380s for Clark, and we sat with them, negotiating with them, we were getting that number down to 170, that was all the savings from the car model. There are other towns that have not done so.
I thought you said it was 166.
There are a number of different numbers, and their original number was over 380, and we are now at 263 implied, all affordable houses, of which 170 of them have been negotiated with the fair share, and 90 is a number that comes from the previous term.
That was left over.
I'm sorry?
That was left over.
I, I took a call when the group was, in the name of the Jonesville Village, Tom laid out it. The question was asked about what about the affordable quota, or however they put it, and it was someone there answered that, well, they're going to be paying interest funds to take care of a certain number of the quota from that. In other words, people, they weren't going to be able to manage it.
You're right.
It could be affordably, it's there, but they're going to be paying interest funds.
It's correct.
And my question is, does this, is this going to be the number, reflect the, the what we paid interest, what is it?
Yes. Yes, that's, back when I first got on council, I mean, back in 97, we worked on a plan. And at the time, it was 68, then I think we got it down to 27, then they changed the formula in the second round, and it went back up again. And that's when, the planner said that we negotiated to 170. But the other units were left over from round one and round two. Round one started in 1992. So as we were talking about units that may not be built, let's say in 2025, out of the 263, let's say 100 weren't built, hypothetical number, then when they go to cast another round, if they have a round four, that 100 will get carried over to that one number and whatever they dream about doing in 2025.
Do you know how many we were able to reduce by, by the, or seven?
Not off the top of my head, I don't. But it was.
The other, the other question, I think you said on the evening realty site, it would be 27 affordable units?
Yes.
And on the A and P site, how many would you anticipate?
I don't know because we, that's only a conversation. The Walnut site has been, is an intervenor in the suit. The A and P site is this conversation I'm hearing of interest by the ownership that has it, but that doesn't mean it will or it won't. It's just a conversation at this point.
At this point, can we still have a group home for the Clark?
Yes.
Are we, are we getting any more? Because I know there was one that you, like, you were debating, and I'm wondering how much you're thinking into that as far as, personally, this renovation. Is there any?
We have three group homes here in Clark. They're all operated by the R. County. We have had decisions with them, we are willing to post several more because for every bedroom placed in a group home, we get a double credit against our affordable housing quota.
Thank you very much.
Any questions? Can I ask you something, please?
My name is Margaret Taylor. I live in Valletta. We all have, we all have, um, you're on the practical side.
Can I ask you to take the microphone from around the larger area?
And you're, you know, kind of people, and you're planning to build this building?
would have debated, and, um, and I'm wondering how much you're thinking to that as far as, um, specifically this obligation. Is there any...
We have three group homes here in Clark. They're all operated by the RCP County. We have had a discussion with them, we are willing to oppose several wars, because for every bedroom placed in a group home, we get a double credit against our affordable housing quota.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Any other questions, would you drive forward, please step forward? Any other questions, please?
My name is, uh, I'm from, uh, we're in the valley. Um, we don't even have, um, a long path to carry. Um, you're on the practical...
Welcome to the microphone, we're having a lot of good hearing.
And you're, um, you know, kind of people, and you're planning to build this building? Um, I've heard of the, the building all the time. Senior has, uh, it's hardly after the one building, and then the two buildings, and then the three buildings, right, you know, I'm running by there, six or seven, and I'm in an empty apartment, something each morning, and the fourth story is high. So you're putting in 168 units?
There's 360 units over on the senior housing. And that was all approved in one plan. They built them individually, but that was all approved in one plan at the planning board level.
Right.
And there's 360 units there.
I understand that, and I'm pretty much, they, they have, and I'm planning to tell you, uh, how many buildings are they planning to put on that property, on the, on the, on that?
That I don't know at this time. If anyone does, Rich or Kevin, you guys have an idea?
Yeah, we do, so, uh...
We know the number, but we don't know how, I don't personally know what's breaking out. I don't know, my planner engineer does.
Uh, Mayor, do you know the number of units that they proposed, that was on 68, over all the buildings?
We have a written plan, uh...
But if you had one building, and it had, say, like, eight or ten apartments in it? Or you, you, you had...
They, they have to submit a site plan, and ask for this board to show how it complies with the ordinance that will be adopted as part of this process. And they're going to have to provide an actual plan, and accept comments on that plan at the time of submission. Right now, we don't have that plan, so we can't answer your question. We're developing an ordinance, and we agreed to a number, and then they're going to have to come in with a plan to show how they can get that number while they still meet power requirement.
Right, so it could be, uh, four-story buildings, right, for that to do that. And how many apartments in a building, and how many people are home? Uh, you have 168, couple that, two people in an apartment, and their children. Um, now the road is probably near there, they won't be able to take one, uh, if they have two kids in the family, even if they have one, or two hundred children.
Well, ma'am, not every apartment's gonna have children in it. You do, well, but it's extreme, 200 children. It's not going to happen. I mean, if there's children in an apartment complex, you're correct, there will be extras in the school, but there's not gonna be 200 children. I, I don't know that for a fact, but I can bet my life on it. You're not gonna have 200 children there.
I hope not, because I don't think that...
I don't think any of our schools could, I'm in complete agreement with you. But I don't, but again, as I said earlier, the state of New Jersey doesn't really care. They'll throw that burden on you and me and the communities, and let us try to figure it out, because they're brilliant in the state of New Jersey, in the court system, and down in the legislature. They're just a brilliant group of people. Because anyone with a, with a marble for a brain would say, if you do this in a Clark, or Cranford, or Westfield, or Fanwood, the towns we know around us, how the hell is this whole system gonna be handled? But you know what it's about, folks? Money and politics at that level. That's all it's about. And that's why, like I said, the two-party system in this state and in this country is broken, and it should be done away with. Because they're each equally as bad, so.
Well, I just wanted to hear your opinion, coming from your, my line.
Thank you, ma'am. We will, at the planning board meeting, it'll be advertised when this plan is ready to be brought and come forward, and please give us your thoughts and your concerns, and we'll see if we can address them for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Any other questions, would you drive forward, please step forward?
Your name is Adrian, 106th Avenue, five hundred Clark. Any other questions, or excuse me, right?
I'll see you.
Regarding the real estate potential, and to gain immunity, are you gaining immunity from the fair share? Are you presenting this to someone in front of the court system, or are you presenting it, is, what is your potential, what is your feeling of the acceptance of the disposition?
Man, since the Supreme Court made this ruling back in March of 2015, we entered into negotiation with the court itself. Uh, we reported to Superior Court, Judge Cassidy, and the assignment over there, uh, and Elizabeth. We've been working with the judge, as well as with a person she has designated to act her on affordable housing patterns. Like the other 21 towns here in County, we're all reporting to her, and since we initially went to her in July of 2015, we have been providing plans, providing reports, telling them what we've done in the past, telling them what we think we can do now. And then it just kind of went on, fair share, to me, the real estate, uh, we had to negotiate with those other posts as well. So what we have in front of the court at this time is a plan that we developed, and was reviewed by the court in December and January, and they found it acceptable to proceed. So if this is in front of the board now, and we'll go over to the council for their acceptance, and then we go back to the court to say, this is what we've done in this town, basically they've indicated a willingness to go along with what we have been proposed so far, and if we continue the direction that we're going, I just don't know reasons why the court would not accept what we have currently for this board at now.
Can I not really, that, you know, for the town or the community, present a, you know, like, they have a fine, they said, for the town, you know, the share, whatever?
All the, all the towns in Union County have had to appear to the court, uh, there are some that have not, uh, such as Elizabeth, uh, Lyndon, Raleigh, which already have a large number of affordable homes, and they're not bothering, because they've got to be more than they would be obligated or restricted. The rest of it is hard in front of the court. Every other town, it's not, who is not...
Um, my next question is, regarding to Mayor?
Yes.
Regarding the Hyatt Hills property, I hope there's only a, uh, that's...
No, go ahead.
Does any of its own properties come to play here by order of the court?
No. Um, Delia, I was gonna get into this, if I may, Mr. President, to show the community, and I showed it on TV the other night. Um, Hyatt Hills right now is zone, uh, recreation. And my biggest fear in this fair share nonsense is that we need to keep, as Kevin said earlier tonight, builders remedy away from Clark. Last fall, I was brought a plan in by a group of suits from New York that came into my office, and they wanted to discuss some real estate with myself and the administrator. And the property was Hyatt Hills. And the meeting lasted about 15 minutes, because I'm sure you know my patience and understanding for nonsense. And they presented a plan, and this plan here is Hyatt Hills. And this would have been all residential, oh, I'm sorry, retail, big box, and back here would have been all low-income housing apartments. And they wanted to buy the property, I think, for about $21 million from the GM bankruptcy holding company. And they gave us this nice fancy booklet, and it was going great until I hit that page, and then my blood hit my brain, and I told them that they could leave, and this would never be built as long as I'm the mayor of this town, and going out the door, he turned, he said, by the way, how's your co-obligation? And I said, we're protected, so you're never gonna build it. Now, what happens in that situation? He was looking to put five apartment complexes back down. I don't know the exact number, he might have mentioned it, but I, you know, between now and then, it was last fall. Um, he would go to court. If we weren't protected, what would happen, I was gonna explain this later, but I'll do it now. He would go into the court and say, your honor, I purchased the Hyatt Hills property. The township will not change the zoning from recreation to retail residential. And I'm neat retail, and I'm gonna put a Costco in, or a Walmart, or whatever, and other stores, and I need to do that, because I'm gonna provide wonderful apartment buildings in the back, with maybe 50, 80, who knows, apartments in there for low-income housing people. And the judge is gonna say, really? And he's gonna slam his gavel and say, Clark, change the zoning, good luck to you, go build it. And as Kevin explained earlier, we would have zero control over how it looked and what it was. So, when we kindly called him to leave, and, uh, thank God, that something like that, because that would have been tragic to our community to have this. And it would have been built immediately, and we would have dealt with more headaches than we could, you know, ever deal with in this fair share plan. Believe me, folks, as I said earlier, and I said on TV, um, I agree with you. I don't, I don't wanna need this, or want it either. But this is a heck of a lot better than what would happen. Also, ladies and gentlemen, it wouldn't just be that property. It's any property that is developable to having a large number of units. The minute we say no, they go right to court and they get what they want. And this has happened throughout the, um, state of New Jersey for a long time now. So the builders remedy is very, very important, uh, for us to keep away from this community and to comply with the fair share housing plans. Although, you know, it could be a positive thing in some areas. On the other hand, I'm sure it'll give us some bumps and bruises, like we were worried about our schools and things of this nature, but hopefully it's edged in over a long period of time and not a short period of time. I don't know that any better than you, I don't have a crystal ball. But, you know, if history kind of repeats itself, as he said earlier, we put a downtown village ordinance into Westfield Avenue, and much hasn't changed in 10 years. You have to have people who are willing to do it, and to be able to make sense out of it economically. So I hope that answers your question. A little long-winded, but I wanted to get the Hyatt thing in.
Other, uh, maybe as well, talk, about, like, other ones, I'm, I, how?
No. Those are all, um, a very good question, Delia, but those are all basically under Green Acres, and Open Space Fund is what they buy it from. And once they buy a, like, um, or turn an area over, they will then turn around, and it's under the Open Space Trust Fund, and it's in their Open Space inventory. They can't turn around and sell that.
But how many, you know, why are properties developed in Hyatt Hills?
No. I, well, between you and I, I mean, in the world, but it's not a secret, I've talked about it publicly. When this plan happened, and I know Racer Trust is not gonna run that golf course for a long period of time, eventually they're gonna sell it, I immediately was on the phone with the county manager, the freeholders, and they do have an interest in purchasing Hyatt Hills. I don't know if it's gonna happen, but they have let the Racer Trust Company, the bankruptcy people, know that they are very interested in purchasing it and keeping it as a golf course, which we need.
And, and, I think that's a, it's like, Hyatt Hills, it's not, it's not, they're fairly, like, say, Apple, maybe they're coming to Clark, and they're going to build a multiple building, a Hyatt Hills property, and it's all right in town, Clark, which you think it is right now?
No, it's all, it's all by GM Trust.
GM Trust?
So, it's all, they can't. If we wanted to do it, let's say, for example, they pulled the plug on the golf course, and it turned into a brown field, and we had an opportunity to do, uh, to change that, to something like you said, Apple's moving, and Google, whoever. Uh, if I was here, I would do what I did with the, uh, property across the street, which is the Commons. I would ask you, folks, what do you think, what do you want? Because I think you stay at trouble that way by getting a sense of the community, because after all, it's our community, not my community, it's our community. And, you know, even when up there, we had an overwhelming response for shopping, that's why it went in. So, though, you know, that, that would be debated in public meetings, and, you know, who knows, we, you know, have other flyers going around saying a bunch of untruths, and, thank you.
Any other questions, would you drive forward, please step forward? Any other questions, please? Any other, uh, would you forward, you can, ladies, you can forward, please, package?
Package?
Well, Mayor, the party meeting is not closed. Ladies and gentlemen, you heard comments from the public, as to the resolution and plan. Any further defection in your work?
Mr. President, I just wanted to, um, say that the mayor, uh, Tom, or he named, Mr. Connor, uh, may have arrived and planned, totally committed, preventing park, and true obligation, uh, on the major park, and his apartment. There's been silver lining, uh, nearly, that new construction, including building recently, labels, which is a positive, offset, so, you know, the, 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 builders can't commit to our town, so, now, when you go develop other courses in town. Um, and if we do reach our land, any number, we can only use the plan and modify it. Um, I think a lot of times, you know, so, in summary, I support, I, I oppose the resolution, uh, depending on...
I'll second that. Um...
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. President, I'd first off like to thank, um, John Laza, who tonight is at dinner, I'm supposed to be at, the Union County Mayor's Dinner, but he's up for Business Administrator of the Year, so, obviously, I felt it was more important to be before my citizens than to be at a dinner that had been at 16 other times, so, um, and hopefully he'll win. He's very deserving. And Rich O'Connor, our planner, Kevin O'Brien, Joe Tree, RC, our attorney, Kelly, our attorney here. I wanna thank them for their diligent professional work they've done on behalf of all of us. I would like to also thank this planning board. Folks, this is an unpaid position, and these people are your neighbors, and they're good people. And there's a mix-up here of Republicans and Democrats and whatever else you wanna call yourself, but it doesn't matter to me. If you're willing to serve and work at this town collaboratively, I'm willing to have you. Uh, this was something I know the board was not happy about early on, and we were all chewed on that old piece of dirty leather, as I said. Um, this is New Jersey, ladies and gentlemen, and this is what we're gonna get. Now, if you came up here and started yelling real out at me, I can't say, well, move out of Clark. I would have to say, move out of the state, because no matter where you move, it's the same thing. Um, I heard a rumor, and I say it's a rumor because I really don't know, and maybe it's just the beginning of a negotiation, but I heard the town of Garwood is looking at like 300 units. Now, I don't know if that's true or not, or maybe it's a starting point, and they'll be able to come down. I know, uh, oh, a little FYI, do you know the Yankee Car Wash in Westfield at the end of Roway Avenue, right? Everybody went there one time or another in your life? That is now, have a fence around it, they're knocking that down in the building next door, and they're building apartments with low-income housing there also. Uh, when you go up Central Avenue, between North and South Avenue in Westfield, the big building going up on the right, that is also a part of a low, uh, to moderate income housing plan. The other thing to remind you is that when you're talking about low to moderate income, look, there could be, as we say, outsiders from Clark coming in, you know, could be. Um, on the other hand, this may help some of our children too. If you have a young man or lady who graduates high school, maybe doesn't go on to college, or maybe does, and comes out and has a job making 30, 32, $35,000 a year, they're eligible also to be in this for, to live in one of these apartments, they would be eligible. Um, some of the senior citizens that are on a long waiting list over at Wood Press are, um, definitely eligible to get into some of these apartments. Uh, it could be young policemen that come into Clark, that wouldn't go into a low unit, but they would go into a moderate unit. Some of our young DPW workers that start out at like $40,000 a year. So, there's a little bit of sunshine too in this plan here. If it truly gets a very nice downtown going in Westfield Avenue, I think everybody would be pretty happy about that. Again, ladies and gentlemen, we don't know. I, I personally, and I know, I'm not gonna speak for the rest of the board, but I'm pretty sure I know their feelings. We appreciate you coming out here tonight. I would like to, um, apologize, and here I go, for the moron who put this flyer out, because it's moronic in nature, and it's small-minded and doesn't have the truth. And, you know, this happened one other time, when, um, the Lake Avenue Meals property was getting developed, somebody was walking around with a flyer, and it was about low-income, that's a buzzword, let's face it, let's be honest with each other. And one of my councilwomen at the time stopped the lady, she lived up that way, and she said, why are you passing this out? Low-income housing isn't being built, it's, as we stated, the developer's gonna buy off the shares. And she said, well, how else can you get people to a meeting? And that's sad, that when people use the fear factor for whatever they're trying to accomplish. On TV, I did say if the person would like to sit next to me... On TV, I did say, if the person would like to sit next to me and go line by line with this, I would be more than happy to do that. I never got a phone call. So, you know what? The best thing you can do is follow the media, tap into Clark, they're always at our meetings and they follow everything. Uh, TV 36, our meetings are now streamed on our hourclark.com, our website, so if you have direct TV, don't say you can't see them, go onto your computer and see it and ask questions. I've been stopped in the community a lot in the last few weeks with questions, and I'm happy to do that. Long as I can, I will. And if I couldn't at that point, I'd take your number and call you back later. This is New Jersey. When you go to vote in the elections, remember who you're voting for, because this is what goes on in the State House. I read an article in the paper, and I don't wanna get involved into the politics of it tonight, but they said one party will probably do very well up in Morris County over the next 15, 20 years if this plan comes into play. So deep down at the root of it, it's the Builders Association wanting to grab more money as much as they can out of everybody in overdeveloped towns. Clark is developed, and we're 99% built. We really don't need this, let's be honest about it. But we have to do it, the gun is to our head, and we don't have much of a choice. And like I said, I'm, I'm very happy. If anybody here in this community wants to object to this plan, this is how serious it is. You have to go to Superior Court on June 29th. I don't have the court room and the time yet, but that's where you're gonna have to object before a Superior Court judge. So, I mean, we're under time constraints. When we negotiated this, I mean, it happened like that. We have to have this all in place and done by June 29th. So we're not trying to rush it, we're not trying to jam it down anybody's throat, it's just the nature of the beast. Because the affordable housing people, I think, wanna make sure something comes to fruition this time. Over the years, there was a lot of talk about it and not very much got done with it. Unfortunately, they're over, let's talk Union County right now, and Clark is part of that, they're gonna overcrowd a Union County. And if every county's doing this, how many apartments and affordable units do you really need? I, I don't know the answers to those questions. But anyway, welcome to New Jersey. Again, I wanna thank the professionals in the planning board and all of you for being out here, the community for listening to us tonight. It's live and it'll be replayed. And if you have any further questions, feel free, myself, John Laza, my administrator, or, you know, any members of council would be glad to help you with this. So God bless you and thank you for coming out tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, before you guys go, I'd like to, uh, just, uh, comment on, thank you for coming out. Mr. Ryan, thank you for the very thorough explanation, recommendation. I expected a lot more questions this evening, and the federal representation you gave today, I'm sure, eliminated many of our questions, but the whole topic is still in session. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much, Mr. Ryan. And I'd be really glad to thank John Laza and Councilmen for their diligence in this yard, reporting to the county. Would that, uh, uh, for vote three?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Brackley?
Yes.
Mr. Cott?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Alton?
Yes.
Mr. Yeller?
Yes.
I think you're correct, Mr. Mayor. But, uh...
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, thank you for thinking to be, um, my dear, yes. She was only in my office every day as our secretary there and one of our administrative assistants.
She had any other records in there?
I know, they always forget, Mike.
Colonel, you there? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Do you have a motion to open the talks to the public for the other hours? All favor. Does the party need an office of the public to address or any elements they would like to? Do you step over to the name and address for record three? Any comments on the one, do you have a motion to vote for the special? All favor. Uh, the session is not closed. I'll be heading to the next, if you have any, if anyone have any to give us. If you're done, on the next item, hold this, if anyone have it over there. If you're done, I have to read you the main course, we'll be back in the council chamber at 7:30, uh, main course, council chamber, am I correct?
Yes.
Do you have a motion to adjourn? All favor. I agree with you, I'll adjourn. Thank you so much.